We're gonna make this personal this evening. Good evening, Leonard. Good evening, Joanne. How are you doing? Hello, Matt. How are you doing? So, we're gonna make this very personal since we have such a large, a large audience here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting of Carnegie Borough Council's order. Um, we'll begin with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, would you please take roll call?
Thank you, sir. Counselperson Riley?
Here.
Counselperson Boyd?
Here.
Counselperson Demko?
Here.
Counselperson Sarsfield?
Present.
Counselperson Delas?
Here.
Counselperson Katina?
Here.
Mayor Kabista?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any of the listed motions this evening? Seeing no public comment, we'll begin with administration. Counselperson Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion 1A, a motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on January 11th, 2016.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion 1B, a motion to adopt resolution number 2016 dash 2, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie relative to the establishment and maintenance of the Borough of Carnegie's paid fireman's pension plan.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
No, I don't recall if we were gonna table this.
No, I think this one was, we were gonna take a vote on.
Okay. Motion 1C, motion to adopt resolution number 2016 dash 05, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie creating a tobacco-free zone at all parks, courts, ballfields, playgrounds within the municipality.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, just with the addendum, removing the, uh, the line item that I mentioned before about police enforcement.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Finance, Counselperson Demko?
Motion to approve the February bill list and bill list addendum.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please, Steve.
Counselperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Counselperson Boyd?
Yes.
Counselperson Delas?
Yes.
Counselperson Riley?
Yes.
Counselperson Demko?
Yes.
Counselperson Katina?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Public Works, Counselperson Delas?
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to offer impartment to Robert Brown in probationary status and pay rate in accordance with the labor agreement for the period of ninety days and upon successful completion thereof, full-time employment, subject to the collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of Teamsters.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please, Steve.
Counselperson Demko?
Yes.
Counselperson Boyd?
Yes.
Counselperson Riley?
Yes.
Counselperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Counselperson Delas?
Yes.
Counselperson Katina?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion to accept the resignation of Department of Public Works foreman Dan Butera effective February 5th, 2016.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, Dan has, uh, given long and faithful service to the Borough. Uh, his position would be filled by the previous motion, uh, to, to hire Robert Brown. Dan is not here this evening. Uh, we neglected to create a proper sending off for him, so he will come at the next public meeting, when we will recognize him.
Plus he's in Vegas.
Plus he's in Vegas. Okay, well, I didn't know that.
Steve, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, please.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to appoint Peter Sheppis to the position of working foreman with the Department of Public Works.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Sheppis has been given also a long and faithful service and is doing a lot of the work already, having been in the assistant position, uh, and he's well qualified in this job.
I like the idea, seeing Mr. Sheppis working. I, I think that's a good idea. And you can tell him I said so.
Thank you. Making the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to appoint Thomas Cranmer to the position of assistant working foreman with the Department of Public Works.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Cranmer will be taking Mr. Sheppis' place as Mr. Sheppis promotes.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Who's taking Mr. Cranmer's place now?
The first.
A motion to permit the Carnegie Youth Athletic Association to utilize the Seventh Avenue Field Monday through Saturday. Carnegie Park Baseball Field and All Purpos Field Monday through Sunday, and Chayota Fields 1 and 2 Monday through Sunday, beginning April 1st, 2016 to October 31st, 2016.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Public Safety, Counselperson Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion. Motion A, motion to adopt resolution number 2016 dash 03, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie establishing a handicap parking space at 221 Railroad Avenue.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Community Development Code Enforcement, Counselperson Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion 5A to adopt resolution number 2016 dash 04, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie approving that the acquisition and subsequent disposition of the parcel of vacant property known as Lot and Block Number 66 N dash 186, 11 Howard Avenue, would be in accord with the comprehensive plan of the municipality.
I would move to table this until such time as we can, uh, give it a little more thought before we make a final decision on what to do.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion 5B to authorize the manager to make appropriate notifications and publication of advertising and prepare the appropriate ordinances for council to consider the acceptance of the dedication of the streets commonly known as Cathedral Court, Mountain Drive, and Scenic Hill Drive.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, just to make, mention that these streets were previously in a housing development, um, and the, uh, Borough has been providing snow removal, and it's appropriate that these streets be turned over to the Borough so that we can collect state funding for the maintenance of these streets.
Thank you. Motion.
Also, Mr. President, not just snow removal, but also, um, police enforcement, too.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion 5C to accept the alley vacation request of One Water Street per the recommendation of the planning commission from the application submitted by Mr. George Zewillah.
Second. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Steve.
Counselperson Sarsfield?
No.
Counselperson Delas?
No.
Counselperson Riley?
No.
Counselperson Boyd?
No.
Counselperson Demko?
No.
Counselperson Katina?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Thank you. We'll now have committee reports. We'll begin with administration. Counselperson Boyd?
I have just one thing to talk about this evening, and it parallels something that I sent to Joanne in email the other day with regard to Carnegie and, and that, uh, that we've become cool. You know, we're kinda, we're hip. Things that you read about Carnegie at this point in time are basically positive things as opposed to negative things, and, uh, the content in most articles that you read about Carnegie is cool. Well, we're gonna have a cool website pretty soon. I had the opportunity to spend a little time in administration the other day and got a little bit of a preview, and I'll tell you what, there's some things that, that the young lady that Steve found built this website for us, that there's some things that she built into the website that I don't see many websites do. I mean, when you look at the pictures that are on every page, not only are they gonna be nice pictures of things that people, um, if you're not familiar with Carnegie, you'll think it looks nice. If you are familiar with Carnegie, you'll say, wow, I've been there, I know that, but not only that, it will be seasonal related. In other words, if it's winter, it'll be snow covered. If it's summer, it'll be sunny and the trees will be green. If it's fall, the leaves will have a fall tone to them. It's just, it's just incredibly deep in content as well. I, I think it's, uh, I think it's going to be a real asset, um, and will, for those people that are looking for things in Carnegie and end up on our website, they'll see that, uh, we've got a cool website to think positive things of us as a result. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance, Councilwoman Demko?
Nothing to make. Steve and I are getting together a couple times this month, so I will definitely have a report next month for you.
Thank you. Code Enforcement and Community Development, Councilwoman.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the local businesses that donated baskets for the Chinese auction for the fundraiser in memory of Melissa Bowers, um, that was held this past Saturday. They were beautiful. I know we go to the local businesses a lot, but, uh, I really appreciate that, and also to support them, uh, last weekend, February 5th and 6th, and then this coming weekend, February 12th and 13th, it is, they're all having Valentine Day specials, and so they will be open from 5 to 9 on February 12th and 13th. So, please go down, check out what they have, and support the local businesses.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut your eyes. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Public Works, Counselperson Delas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Matters, uh, road paving, uh, we expect bids to be received by March 3rd. This would be for the paving of three streets, Swallow Hill Road from Forsyth to the Sigrid, Annabelle Street from Cooks Lane to Flett Court, and Doolittle Avenue from Branch to Scenic. Uh, the cost for this would be covered approximately by our liquid fuel tax allowance from the state, which is about $215,000. So, uh, we should be receiving bids early March and, uh, awarding those shortly thereafter so that we can get started on the paving season. Uh, since the flooding that we had on Washington Avenue and Franklin in June of 2014, uh, we continue to look for and address, uh, continuing causes of stormwater, uh, getting into our sanitary sewer system. We have identified, uh, two properties, uh, the Boys and Girls Club and the Beachwood Apartments, which were formerly known as Carnegie Towers, as contributors of stormwater into our sanitary system. So, this year, we will be adding some additional stormwater sewer lines on Christie and on Capitol Drive. The sewer line on Capitol Drive will go about halfway up the hill and allow all of the parking lot water and roof water from Beachwood Apartments to get into our stormwater system directly, and about a third of the way up Christie, which will allow the roof water from the Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club, to get into the storm sewers also. So, that will be happening this summer. Plum Street, which is over near, um, Chestnut, between Chestnut and Bouquet, uh, has been an area that has historically had stormwater problems, uh, property floodings. Uh, there are no storm drains on Plum, and we have been alerted this year that the water company, uh, Pennsylvania American Water Company, will be doing some plumbing, uh, work on that street this year, and they will be trenching the street to put in some new water lines. So, we're gonna take advantage of that when they get done and put in some sewer, uh, stormwater pipes, and, uh, the advantage of that for us is that the water company will pay for the repaving of the street because they tore it up. So, this is a, a nice plan for us. That will, the construction will happen this summer and the paving, uh, in 2017. Carnegie Park Construction this summer will be limited to Chayota Field. Uh, Public Works is already building a retaining wall, uh, in the park, and we'll be using grant money to build a new press box, uh, and storeroom, uh, behind home plate, and that work will be completed before baseball season begins. Uh, there won't be any other park work this summer. We will have three blighted properties that will be raised this year, 332 Seventh Avenue, 645 Bridge Avenue, and 322 Al Street Extension. Uh, we have already bid those, received and accepted, uh, the bids, awarded the bids, and the Borough Engineers will be coordinating, uh, with the contractor for the scheduling of the tearing down of those three buildings, and that work is funded through a grant. Uh, additionally, outside of Public Works, uh, zoning committee met, uh, with our contractor, Mr. A.J. Sports from Environmental Planning and Development, uh, Environmental Planning and Design, on February 4th to work, uh, continue work on our draft new zoning ordinance. The draft, I would say, is nearing completion. We have a couple other committee members here. I would say it's nearing completion. Within a couple of months, we should be supplying this to council for review, and, uh, if the council feels that we're moving in the right direction, then we would hold a public meeting for, uh, presentation and input from the public. The, uh, main, the main, uh, work of this, um, rewrite is the segregation of the C-1 commercial zone into subzones. We had previously proposed that an overlay would be put over top of the traditional part of the business district. We have since been advised that that is not the best solution, and we're just going to rezone into smaller zones. So, a lot of work going on right now to identify which type of businesses are best on the traditional part of Main Street as opposed to businesses which are best on Mansville Boulevard, which may be different than what we're interested on Third Street, different than what we're interested on Washington Avenue. So, that's what we've been hashing through. The other issue, uh, in this committee is working on is, um, business signage. That is, what is permissible and nonpermissible types of business signs. So, as soon as we're, uh, ready, Mr. President, we'll be bringing that back to council, and I expect that to be soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Counselperson Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll begin, uh, to work with Chief Canada, the mayor here, and, uh, also, uh, Councilman Boyd, who lays on to the Fire Department, to, uh, plan our, uh, this year's Public Safety Day. Um, we'll begin shooting for June, um, shortly after, uh, school is dismissed for the, uh, summer. Um, also, the, the next issue is, at last month's cog meeting, the guest speaker spoke about, uh, bridges and the condition of, uh, bridges. Um, and, you know, I, I'm kinda remiss, and I, I spoke on this the other day when the, uh, Bridge Committee met, that, um, you know, our, the Main Street Bridge is our responsibility, and who knows when the last time that was inspected? Um, now, Penney has a list out of the bridges they do, do, um, inspect, but I met with, uh, one of the county engineers, and it's our responsibility to inspect our bridges just as the county has to inspect their bridges. Now, I'm gonna follow up with, directly with the engineer who handles the bridges for the county, and he's going to pass along some information to me, um, which I'll bring back to the Borough, but for next year's budget, we're gonna probably have to look at, um, the cost of having that bridge inspected. Um, and then, there, there are several various avenues, again, this engineer will follow up with me, of getting funding to, to take care of whatever repairs will be needed, and, and I'm just pretty confident that that bridge is gonna need some, some repairs. But, it's obviously been let go for far too long, and, and if it wasn't for us working on this, I don't know if any of us would really thought of, thought of this, and, and thank goodness we did. You know, hopefully the, the repairs aren't that intense, but I'm sure there's gonna be some. Um, also, I pass along to Public Works and to, uh, Councilman Boyd for the Fire Department, Duke County Light is offering free training for whenever trees, um, go into power lines, how to handle it and stuff, and the training's free, it's at their facility, so, you know, it, it's a great opportunity, um, for our Public Works and our Fire Department. And Councilman Boyd said that, uh, some of our firemen already participated, but I think it's fantastic because with the amount of trees that we do have in the Borough and the continuing of applying more trees, the likelihood of a tree ending up in the power lines are probably a little greater and smaller than this power, so I think that, uh, it's a great opportunity for our guys to get out there and, you know, make sure that they safely handle this situation. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Delas, I believe you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, I asked the President if I could make some comments at this time after Public Safety, um, some particular comments regarding the incident that happened last week with the shooting death of Mr. Bruce Kelly by the Port Authority Police in Pittsburgh. There are so many things wrong with what happened. You could list a laundry list of things that are wrong with what happened there, um, from the beginning to the end, and even including afterwards, uh, newspaper and television coverage and funeral and, uh, just an incredible number of things that we could spend days talking about. I'd like to just focus on two items, and one of them is the use of canines by the police, and the other is the fact that, uh, another black man has been shot by police in the United States of America for apparently not good reason. Regarding canine programs, um, it was always my understanding that dogs were employed by the police for the purpose of sniffing out drugs or, or, um, explosives or some other thing, but it seems now that dogs are being trained to attack people, and this to me seems so medieval. It hearkens back to a time when we used to use dogs, uh, to break up, um, protest marches or, uh, when in, in fascist countries or communist countries, they used them to attack dissidents. I don't think that that's something that we should be doing in this country. I think it's an embarrassment to our country. But that being said, we do have canines in the police department. You often hear these canines being referred to as officers. I find that offensive. I don't consider our police officers to be dogs, and I don't consider dogs to be police officers. There is a distinction. Police officers volunteer and dedicate their lives to their profession and their careers. Dogs do not do that. Dogs are picked, they're trained, and they're used, not differently than police would use other things at their disposal. When I hear people say that the dog was a hero, uh, who made the ultimate sacrifice, I find that offensive. People make sacrifices, dogs do not because they don't get a choice. The dogs do not have a choice, and, uh, they do not make sacrifices which imply a choice that a human being would make. And I, I find it offensive that we compare dogs to people. Should not compare people to dogs and vice versa. Further, in this particular situation, uh, the dog was directed into a situation which was obviously dangerous to the dog. The suspect in the case said that he was going to kill the dog if it was released on him. It was released on him, and he did that. I think there's so many questions about the use of the dogs in this particular case and other similar cases. In fact, I'm hearing now animal rights activists saying, why are we using police dogs like this? It's not fair to dogs to put them in situations where they can be maimed, aggressively injured, or, um, even killed, and I think there's some rationale to that argument being that the dogs do not have a choice in this matter. Further, then you get into this ridiculous funeral business, uh, where there are dozens of police cars, dozens of police cars, hundreds of police officers in a procession in a funeral larger than anybody in this room will ever have, a bigger funeral than any of us will ever have, and it's for a dog. And I just can't get past that, and the TV covers that like it's the President of the United States that died, or the governor, or some, a dignitary, and it's for a dog. I, I find this bizarre, and I think there's, the entire country needs to go through some mental counseling on this matter. It, it's just bizarre to me. And then we talk about the cost. If you have dozens of police cars in the funeral procession, does that mean we have too many police cars? Are the taxpayers paying for wastage? What about the time of the police officers? Were any of these police officers on duty? Were there's, are overtime being paid to cover them? We have the use of the cars, we have gasoline, and I know that people here in Carnegie were paying for part of that, and that to me is also offensive, that the taxpayers of this town are paying for an elaborate dog funeral. I, I would hope that at some point, this incident last week sparks a debate that will be the beginning of the end of canine police programs, honestly. I do not see them as a value to the police, uh, and, and their burden onto, uh, the citizens who have to pay for all of that, and, and they're certainly not a good thing for the dogs by any means. But even aside from the whole canine thing, we have an issue that another black man has been murdered, if you can use that word, if you're killed for no good reason, I think you can use that word. A black man has been killed by the police, shot a dozen times because he stabbed a dog. The police are expected to uphold the law, they are not expected to be judge, jury, and executioner in a case where someone stabs a dog and the police decide, we're just gonna kill him. I don't understand why a person has to be shot 12 times, and frankly, if you look at the cases around the country, you'd see being shot 12 times is actually rather small. Oftentimes, people are shot 30, 40, or 50 times. A dead, a dead person is shot another 30 times after they're already dead. Bizarre behaviors. And I think in this case, we see, uh, despite, I, I'm getting some opposition on this matter, that this is a racial matter, but to me, it is a racial matter. We had a case, uh, recently where a man in Colorado Springs killed three people at a Planned Parenthood, uh, clinic. One of those persons was a police officer, so we're talking about a cop killer here. He was taken into custody without being shot. He was a white guy. We had the case in South Carolina where a man went into a church. He shot nine people. He was arrested without being shot. We had even still the case two years ago of the previous police dog that died. The dog's name was Rocco, and he was stabbed by an assailant in Pittsburgh. That man who killed Rocco also stabbed a police officer, so now we're talking about somebody who did try to injure a police officer, in fact, stabbed a police officer. Where is that man, Mr. John Rush, today? He's in jail. Now, Mr. Bruce Kelly isn't in jail. We killed him. We, we shot him a dozen times for stabbing a dog. He's a black man. The previous guy who stabbed and killed a dog was a white guy, he's in jail. I see a pattern here. I see a pattern here, and people say, well, each case is separate, you've got to look at them all individually, there's different dynamics. I think that racism continues to be a problem in this country and police departments across the nation. I think every one of us has to be vigilant on this matter. It's not going away. It's been here for hundreds of years. It's not going to disappear anytime soon, and we need to speak out when we see it, and we need to say it, because if we don't say it, it's not ever going to get fixed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, for my report, the only thing I wanted to say was that, and you've heard me, everyone's heard me probably talk about this before, solicitation. If you see solicitors and they come to your house, never be afraid to contact the police and have the police check them out, because in most situations, at least the cases that I've run into over the past few months, they have not come down to the borough and gotten their permits or any of their documentation. They should, the police actually have a very nice program that they get the pictures now and everything, and it's a great program that we do, that we keep track of these individuals like we do, but these individuals are unfortunately still breaking, many of these individuals are unfortunately still breaking the law. So, and I, I know, I, I know I talk about this very frequently, um, but never be afraid to contact the police and get them checked out. Like this individual, I had to call the police, and I had him checked out, and he, I, I told him who I was, and I told him I was calling the police, and he continued to solicit. He went through a few, he went through a few more doors. I told him, you know what? I said, I'm the president of Borough Council. I said, did you, did you get into the borough? Oh, my boss, I believe my boss took care of that, la da 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 da. You know what? Uh, it, it doesn't cut it, in my, my opinion. You need to follow the law, follow through, basically get what you need to from the borough, or we're going to, I mean, we're going to charge you for breaking the law, basically. And I believe in this instance, I believe we did charge him because he was, obviously he, he broke the law. Also, uh, this past weekend, the county executive was actually in town, and the county executive had great things to say about Carnegie and how well we're doing, and very positive things. And if you occasionally listen to Marty Griffin, I can only take Marty Griffin in small doses, but Marty Griffin actually said, the, the quote was, Carnegie really knows how to do it. He was talking about the restaurants and businesses and everything going on in Carnegie, but it's always, it's always fresh and fun to hear that, to turn on the radio and actually hear a radio personality talking about our small town. So, uh, that's it, I, that's all I have for the president's report. We'll now have the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just have one thing for this evening, uh, just to let everyone know that business privilege and, uh, the non-owner occupied registrations, uh, better known as landlord tenant registrations, will be going out within the next week or so. Uh, those are yearly registrations that we have for the business owners, as well as, uh, people who own property within the borough, uh, and have tenants for that, so we should have those out within the next week or so. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Fire Department EMS, Councilman Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. President. EMS had 24 calls, or no, Fire Department had 24 calls in the month of January. EMS had 134 calls. I don't track the numbers month to month, but in looking at my text stream, the way I receive the information from, uh, EMS and fire, that's the smallest number I've ever seen for, uh, for EMS calls, which I guess is a mixed blessing. It's a low amount of revenue for EMS, but people are healthier, so it's, uh, it's a mixed message, if you will. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, now the mayor's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the criminal activity during, oh, sorry, police activity during the month of January, we had a criminal arrest of 16, traffic citations numbered 55, parking tickets, uh, 222 parking tickets, complaints and self-initiated activity by our department numbered 983. Reviewing the crime data on the UCRs, the state crime, the state police crime database, uh, our, our crime data is down once again for the third year, for the third year in a row and, uh, the, uh, fifth out of the last six years. Uh, one year it was flat. And the, uh, serious crimes were down 7%. They were the crimes of aggravated assault, robbery, burglary, and crimes of that nature. And then the less serious crimes, uh, were down a whopping 24%. So, uh, that's, uh, good news for Carnegie. And, uh, when we, when the chief and I talk about these things, we try to, uh, reflect on, you know, what we're doing that really works, and I, I, I believe that we have, uh, well, we've been doing a few things that, uh, help contribute to this. Now, I'm not, obviously, we don't control crime. Crime happens and, uh, you know, sometimes it happens in, in ways, and sometimes it doesn't. But we, uh, can do things that help us to keep a better presence in town. So, uh, some of the things that we do that I believe is helping contribute to these numbers, uh, number one is, uh, our chief now is a working chief. He's on the schedule. Uh, he put, uh, puts himself out there on the day, every day, and, and does the same job as any one of our officers. Uh, he does that so that we can allocate resources to other areas, uh, areas that we feel are more apt for higher crime, uh, you know, other times of the day. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we've experienced in the last, uh, since, since I've been mayor, really, but the last, especially the last three years, is we've been short-staffed. And by, by the chief putting himself on the schedule, that really helped alleviate that problem, and I think that's one of the reasons why we were able to get, uh, more boots on the ground in some of the more around busier times. The other thing is that we, uh, we use data to drive manpower, and, uh, you know, we're constantly reviewing data and re, and, and, uh, use that to drive our manpower and our resources, and I think that's been very successful. Uh, we work very closely with other departments. The chief has created a, a very nice relationship with the other departments, including, uh, many of the organizations in the county, like the district attorneys, the district attorney and the, uh, county police. So, by us partnering with the other departments, that gives us more ability to do the things we need to do here in town. So, I think that's a, a big plus. And I think we've been fairly successful, which we plan on expanding this year, but in our use of social media, it's helped us in a number of, uh, instances. So, those are areas that I think that we've improved on, that have helped us, uh, manage the, uh, crime in this community, and, uh, I think our numbers are showing that, you know, these things are working. Uh, I also would like to mention that, um, we do have, we have Sergeant Litt will be retiring March 31st. Uh, that'll be his final day, he's given that. So, uh, Sergeant Litt will be moving on to, uh, uh, better pastors with, uh, taking care of, uh, his, uh, his twigs. As Stacy has mentioned, uh, for, she mentioned this earlier, uh, Councilwoman Riley mentioned this earlier, is that, uh, four years, it was actually four years ago today when, uh, Melissa Bowers was murdered in town. And, uh, you know, all of us that were on, you know, all of us that were involved in the police department absolutely remember that day. And, uh, this weekend, uh, well, in the past, uh, Melissa Bowers, Mother Colleen Bowers would always have a vigil on this day. Being that we had a, a meeting tonight, she changed it up from a vigil now to a fundraiser, and the fundraiser was used to help, uh, other victims and Melissa's children. And, uh, the fundraiser, as Stacy had mentioned, was the other night, it was very successful. And I just can't tell you how impressed I am with the courage and the determination of Colleen Bowers to make sure that she keeps this, uh, the awareness of domestic violence and what it can do to the fabric of a community and an individual's family in this spotlight. So, I, I really appreciate all she does in that endeavor, and, uh, you know, we, we at the police department are always here to support her. I know the, uh, the chief and I and Councilwoman Riley, we're all there at the, um, at the fundraiser, and, uh, you know, it's a very important thing, and it's, it affects the communities in ways that people don't even realize. So, really want to thank, uh, Colleen Bowers for all that she does. Very courageous woman. Also want to offer, um, my sincere condolences to Pastor Lerue Davis and the Second Baptist Congregation. Pastor Davis lost her husband, Brother Charles Davis. He was a, uh, a rock down there for the congregation. He did just about everything. He's going to be sorely missed, and, uh, he was also a good, a valuable Carnegie resident. So, uh, our condolences to their, to that, to the Second Baptist family and Pastor Davis. We are, uh, going to be, uh, I've, uh, met with the Historical Society, and we were trying to find something to do to honor, um, Marcella McRogan, and, uh, so we are, uh, I am partnering with the Historical Society, and, uh, we are going to have a, uh, a volunteer awards gala. And we're going to, we're going to have nominations from the public for, uh, volunteers, uh, and then award them at the Historical Society's, uh, event that'll be on April 9th at the Carnegie Library. Uh, this will be, we're going to call it the Marcella McRogan Volunteer Awards Gala, and we're going to, uh, get nominations in three areas: community service, public safety, and religious outreach. And the reason why we feel this is appropriate is that, um, Marcella McRogan was a consummate volunteer here in Carnegie. She poured her heart, heart and soul into Carnegie, and, uh, we have a number of other people that are, that keep this community going. Volunteers, people who don't get paid a penny, that are involved in multiple committees who will run into a fire without, uh, thinking twice, or will be serving food to, uh, people in this community in need, or providing them coats, or multiple of other things. And I think these volunteers keep our community strong, they make our community special, and so it's about time that we do honor these volunteers. So, that's, uh, that's something that we're going to start this year, and hopefully it'll be an annual, uh, an annual thing. And, uh, eventually, uh, the money we make from these, uh, from these volunteer galas, uh, it will go towards the 125th anniversary of Carnegie, this celebration for the 125th anniversary of Carnegie, and, uh, and also to keep the Historical Society strong and Also, uh, very excited to announce, as some of you may have known in the meeting, is that, uh, we were successful in working with Port Authority, uh, to get a, uh, a grant from the federal government, a CMAQ grant, a congestion mitigation air quality grant, uh, for a multimillion dollar expansion of our park and ride. And, uh, that is scheduled to break around in 2020, so there'll be a lot of work in the meantime for that, and, uh, I think that's going to be a, a key piece in the development of this community. I think, uh, we already have a TOD plan in place, uh, and so we, that's a transit-oriented development plan. So, uh, with this Keystone block, I think that, uh, we'll be able to implement some of that, uh, transit-oriented development in the area, so that's exciting. Also, the, um, one of, uh, we have a, uh, more news on community development is that, Dave Cervanera, the owner of APIS, he will be, uh, moving to Mary Street and opening up a full-blown brewery and eatery. His plans are with a restaurant, and those plans aren't to be, the, the plans that he conveyed to me were that, that the restaurant and everything will not be open until August of, uh, next year of 2017, but it'll be small steps in the meantime. Uh, but one thing he will be having, uh, at his place coming up is the 2016 Craft Beer Works Competition, which will be Sunday, March 6th, uh, from 12 to 4 at APIS. And, uh, what that is, is home brewers will bring their craft brew to his, to APIS, and they'll be tasting and judging, and, uh, the winner will actually get a, uh, a contract to be, uh, I don't know, a contract that will, the winner of area will be brewed by shoe brew and released during Craft Brew Week, so they'll be able to brew it in, uh, big quantities. So I think that's pretty exciting for the community. And, uh, I, I do want to say that, uh, at the library right now, there's a lot of things going on, but, uh, they have this really neat show for kids, Alexander and the Terrible, Horrible, No Good, Very Bad Day, which, uh, has one more weekend to run, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Friday at 7:30, and then the other Saturday and Sunday at 2:00. And I've, I've heard a lot of good things about the show, so I think it's a great way to introduce kids to theater. And our 5K race, the Ninth Annual 5K Race, is, uh, once again, April 23rd, 2016. Applications are being accepted, and, uh, what's new this year is we actually have a new category for, uh, 10 and under. So, uh, we've, we've experienced a, a large growth in that area of young kids running our race. It's a flat course, it's a fast course, uh, and it's a great way to introduce kids to running. And, uh, so now we have a category for 10-year-olds and under, and I think that'll, uh, that's a, that's a good sign that we're expanding. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this point in time, will General Butler comment? Anyone wishing to comment on anything?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Joanne Letcher with the Carnegie Community Development Corporation. Just wanted to let you know also that we are working with Hans Gruhart and Linda T. Angelo with the Small Business, Small Bish Shop. We are coming out with a marketing campaign, and it's continuing on with Carnegie's Happening on Facebook. We are also, uh, Hans just grabbed carnegieshappening.org, IHOP.com, so we've covered all that. Uh, Hans is going to help with the website. Uh, Linda's going to work on a flyer that will be available, uh, for local business owners, the borough, myself to have to pass out to visitors to come to Carnegie. It will have a map on it and other good information. The website will also have a calendar of events. And, uh, just to give you an idea of what we're trying to imitate, but not really, is if you go to Lawrenceville's website, uh, lvpittsburgh.com, you'll see, you know, that's kind of the idea we're looking at. And I kind of laughed because on their community calendar, they're nowhere near as busy as we are. I mean, I'm looking at months where there's empty dates, I'm like, we have nothing on them. So, I think that'll be a good way to keep everybody organized. Anyone will be able to come to the website, load their event, and then we will have a webmaster who will just approve it and get it on the website. So I think we'll get better organized. And we're looking at more things to do. I just met with, uh, Google today. They want to do a streetscape on it, so I'm trying to negotiate some bargain rates that if some of the businesses pay into it, we may be able to get it for a big discount. So I think that'll add to it. It's really a cool concept, and they do a lot, um, also with directions, restaurants. So it's a really great thing to have. So, more coming on that, but I just wanted to let you all know before I start promoting this with the local businesses. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. Something else happening at the library, I think you all know, on, a week from tonight, on President's Day, um, we have what we believe is, uh, annual tradition of our Lincoln Portrait Concert. Lynn Hayes Freeland is our narrator, and, uh, Pittsburgh Youth Symphony is the orchestra that's performing. Uh, we will be open on President's Day from 2:00 till 7:00, free, Lincoln Gallery, as we post, and the concert does have a ticket price, but then there'll be a dessert reception that'd be open in the Lincoln Gallery afterwards, and you should all be there doing your civic things, celebrating President's Day, zipping off skiing, doing something wonderful to honor one of our, well, one of our greatest presidents. The other thing is, I, I've, there were so many things I wanted to comment on. I wanted to thank the borough. I had, I was bending heads with Duquesne Light because they came along and shored down a whole bunch of trees, um, without any communication whatsoever. And they came back with us, and Steve was there, Keith was there, and I do know that, Public Works agreed to clean up all the locks that they left behind, and apparently they did it on a warm, muddy day. But, of course, I know they do take care of it, um, and, uh, my biggest concern is with sort of like one of the last stops on erosion, that's not going to happen immediately. But I had, I, I had my entourage, I had an arborist from Western Pennsylvania Conservancy there who said, his biggest concern is safety, because those trees were a barrier. I, I did not know this, it was when I wasn't here. Apparently a guy had a heart attack or a stroke or something, he went right across our lawn and slammed into those trees, and it was the only thing that kept him, he wasn't going very fast, uh, but they kept him from going over the cliff. So we're, we're going to get some green construction fencing, thank you, but that's clearly not... But that's clearly not a solution when you have a bluff the way we do. So, I think it was rather precipitous on our part. And I think our utilities were for us. And they should have been able to take us a little bit better. But the borough was very good in terms of their response. And I don't know how you're gonna deal with the mud. It's only gonna get muddier, Keith. But we'll figure it out. And all this talk on websites, I was gonna say, your website, your website. We'll just have so much information. But I mean, is there one that's like the first line of, "This is where you're gonna find out what's happening in Carnegie"? But I guess there's all under development at this point.
I would think Carnegie's Happening would be the one.
Yeah, that's okay. Rather than the borough one, okay.
Yeah, it should be Carnegie's Happening. The borough one should be for borough business and stuff like that. That's...
Okay. I don't know, that's getting seasonal reports, whatever. It sounds so cool. I'd like to also... I wanna say two things. You're lucky to have the police force that we do in Carnegie and the relationships we have. And I've gotten some problems with our alarms going off. And they're always heartily gracious to us. But I wanted to thank you, Mr. Los, for your comments because I think that's a discussion that we all should pay a great deal of attention to. And I think it takes courage. And we really need to look at that and speak about it in our hearts, in our minds. And I thank you for that.
Any other comment?
Come on, Leonard.
Okay, we'll begin with Councilman Boyd.
Just one thing this evening, Mr. President. Just again, this year, in cooperation with the Bridgeville Volunteer Fire Department, Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department will be having their annual Cash Bash on May 7th. Everybody here except Stephen, the chief, is selling tickets. Well, these two fine gentlemen, I'm sure they're both gonna buy tickets. But if you have anybody that are into... That happens to be into Cash Bash kind of environments, send them any of our ways. And we'll be glad to get you a ticket. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Riley?
Nothing additional, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Sarsky?
Yes, it's February. We all have somebody we love or hopefully loves us. So, be good and, you know, my mother, she's no longer with me. But there's no love like a mother's love. And I think everybody, whether you're a guy or a girl, there's no love like a mother's love. So, if you're lucky enough to still have your mom, give her your whole heart. And then whatever you do, don't forget. Pick up the phone today. You can text, you can email, you can do the camera thing. Well, Stacy's... What is that? Where you can see them all?
FaceTime.
FaceTime. You can FaceTime them. See, I'm not... I'll get there one of these days. But there's a thousand different ways. You can send them flowers, letters, cards. I mean, absolutely, in today's world, with all the technology, reach out and touch your mother. And love the ones that you're with, right? All right? That's all I have, Mr. President.
Am I saying happy Valentine's?
Happy Valentine's.
Councilman Deppco?
I just wanna say, last Wednesday, I was babysitting my granddaughter, who's two years old, in Dormont. And I'm sitting there watching it start to snow. And the roads are getting bad. And I'm getting nervous because I hate driving in the snow. So, it's coming down. My son finally got home. And I said, "I'm gonna go because I wanna get home before it really gets bad." Well, I slid all through Dormont, hit McMonigal, slid up McMonigal. Green Tree Road was awful. Hit the beginning of Forsyth was bad, at the green tree side of it. I just hit the "Welcome to Carnegie" sign. And it was clear, smooth sailing. It was perfect. The roads were perfect, they were great. And I just wanna commend our Public Works again. I know I sound like a broken record. But when it snows, we have the cleanest roads anywhere. And not only myself experiencing it, but I hear it from... Comments from everybody, everywhere. So, tell the guys thanks again. They did very well.
Absolutely, I agree 100%. The roads are always clean in Carnegie. You guys do an incredible job.